My phone says it's 7:02, so I think we can start since that means it's after seven. So I am going to call to order the meeting of the Urbana Park District. And I believe it says here it's Tuesday, the August 13th, which I find a little hard to believe, but.
Here we are.
Because I would really like to think it was still June. All right, remote attendance, we have no requests for remote attendance.
Correct.
So our second item is to accept the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public comment, we have two people. Audrey, would you like to begin? I have you, although I don't have a topic of concern on your card.
Okay.
So if you-
I'm here to talk about the Meadowbrook Organic Gardening Program.
Okay, all right, I'm just going to fill that in on your card, Meadowbrook Organic Gardens, is that good?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'd like, first of all, to thank you all for your service. I've watched some previous meetings and I know a lot of you would rather be the boots on the ground than wading through finances that makes all you do possible, and I truly appreciate it. I'm here to address the topics of sustainability and equity in the Organic Gardening Program at Meadowbrook. Dixie Jackson addressed you in March on these topics, and she didn't use these words, she gave you some history instead. When the program started in 1974, the ability to preserve and nourish the soil was included as both a compost pile to recycle weeds and clippings, and a manure pile to replenish nutrients. These were provided for several decades, that's what sustainability means. There was storage for off-season tools and fencing for those who needed it. This is equity for those who lack suburban lots, or apartments, or live in apartments. Today, those concepts have fallen by the wayside. The current manual informs you that manure is not being provided because soil testing has shown that potassium and phosphorus are adequate. It then hints that you'll want to provide some nitrogen. In Illinois, nitrogen is the critical limiting ingredient for crop production. To admit that the gardens are deficient in nitrogen is the same as saying the plots are not fertile. This information should not be a hint in fine print, it should be a black box warning to anyone signing up to garden. These plots are rented, as is, nitrogen not included, B-O-I-O-N. The rental fee for these gardens is the least of the expenses involved in participation. You need a pickup and deep pockets to bring in enough manure to fix the problem. A few people do have these things, and it shows, which I think is all the more discouraging to the lesser endowed gardeners, who may believe the low productivity is their fault. Which brings me to my next topic, the garden manual states that weeds need to be under 12 inches, yet numerous plots have been completely abandoned to weeds. There are two entire plots devoted to 45-inch mugwort, and that's the second crop. There are two entire plots, there are two, three, are devoted to five-foot foxtail with full seed heads. Is it the intent to rent those to unsuspecting future gardeners, who didn't expect this gift from the past? What about the people who are there now? There are 30 abandoned or unrented plots, not including, oh, I'm sorry, I brought a map to show this. The orange are the plots that are abandoned, or not rented, on this map. That's 53% of the annual plots, and it's only about 10% at most of the perennial plots, which are rented. And I'm taking out these that are lost to shade, and this entire north side is lost to the air conditioning noise from Clark Lindsey here. So that's 53% annual, and maybe 10% perennial. I know, I think a lot of people are committed to the perennial. The participation in the garden has fallen dramatically because word has gotten around, it's a lot of work for a little return. If the plots are, if these plots are rented out in the future, it'll be a cruel trick to play. The mowing crew have been trying to cut down the weeds, but they are landfilling them, rather than recycling the nitrogen through composting for mulch. In other words, nitrogen is continuously being exported from the plots, instead of turned into compost and returned. The Landscape Recycling Center told me that this is because they charge a fee to process it, which also kills the weed seeds, by the way. The weeds and grass clippings could not be composted, used to be composted on site. It's a terrible waste, and it's not discouraging the weed growth in the slightest. The five-foot foxtail is already seeded, the mugwort propagates happily from root pieces. The manual has several other problems. It advises planning mint borders to discourage deer. Mint is invasive and perennial and a bane of the gardeners, nor does it discourage deer. It forbids the use of lightweight plastic fence mesh. Most of the gardeners are putting lightweight plastic mesh at the top of their three- or four-foot metal fence, because that suffices to raise the level enough to discourage the deer. And that includes the garden supervisor. None is getting loose, as the manual claims. The Organic Gardening Program is one of the few in which your participants are actually working their butts off to improve things. They're enjoying it, but they're working hard all the same. I don't think the cost is too high for the benefits to the Park District. You know, there's probably two or, two or more tenants for each of these plots, too. I mean, we've got, I won't go over it again, but there's, there's probably at least 130 participants in the gardening thing, and that's even with it half-empty. Permanent manure and compost bins were installed about three years ago, and at almost the same time, the relatively inexpensive support of those critical activities was discontinued. Why? Based on more than 20 years of gardening, I believe the sustainability problem is due to ignorance. The garden program has been relegated to other duties as assigned for the education staff. If I had large cohorts of children coming in for camps and classes, I know I couldn't find the time to communicate with gardeners, much less research agricultural, agricultural and horticultural practices on the side. I recommend the program be reassigned to someone with deep botanic and horticultural knowledge, such as Matthew Bach. He knows the answers to any question relating to landscape, invasives, and current agricultural practices off the top of his head, because he's studied and worked hands-on with these issues for years. If he were in charge, I don't think we'd be seeing these problems of sustainability. He could simply be in charge and someone else can handle the clerical side. The equity problem cannot be remedied through scholarships, because again, the Organic Gardening Program is one in which your participants are providing the majority of both sweat equity and financial equity on their own. Services such as manure and storage absolutely must be provided to level that gardening field for all. This year, there were new African, African-American, and Hispanic gardeners. They need to know that things can be better, it's not their efforts that were deficient, but rather the worn-out and unreplenished soil itself. On Davenport Hall on campus, there is a statement across the buildings on the quad, "The wealth of Illinois is in her soil, and her strength lies in its intelligent development." In order to, I think an immediate step for this fall would be to plow manure into the entire annual garden and provide it for the perennial gardeners to put in themselves, if they so choose. I also recommend that you maybe make more of the gardens perennial gardens, so that more gardeners have a reason to invest. Anyway, I'd like to thank you again for your gift of time and giving me this opportunity to speak. I'll send you a short summary of the research I've done regarding the importance of manure, compost, and weed management. That's all I have today.
Right, I neglected, and I should, I should have, I neglected to say that when we have people come and speak to us, our policy is that the board and the staff do not respond. The board will address your, I mean, the, the staff will address your issues and try to get to it within a week, right?
Or sooner.
Right, or sooner, but, I mean, the week is kind of the end of, end of the line limit. So that's why we're not going to-
Sure.
We won't, because it just, it's, it's too difficult, but, and I'm sorry I didn't say that first, but it's, that's, that's our policy. It's not, it's not just people being here tonight, that's our standard policy, which I think maybe we even have listed in our-
I'm aware of it.
But thank you for coming, thank you for taking the time to come.
Thank you.
Kathy, you ready?
I feel a little woebegone here, I only have one page. My name is Kathy Wallig. First, I want to say I appreciate every facility in this Park District. I don't begrudge the taxes, I don't begrudge programming fees, I'm just thrilled to live where I live and have what I have. However, I want to talk to you about the water temperature at the indoor aquatics center. I started the shallow water aquatics exercise program there about six years ago. When my husband retired, about three years later, he joined me. This is the 6:00 AM start time, we're up before the sun. On a regular basis, our classes would have about eight to 10 people. The lap lanes were always full, they were always double, there was always a waiting group to get in. Today, there are usually about two participants in the aerobics class. Matt checked for me this morning, there were four lap swimmers. You started having the water temperature problems about 18 months ago. Tim and Corky had to deal with me when that happened. I thought we had worked out a solution, but it didn't last very long. I'm not a sissy, I know when I get in the water, I have to acclimate, I know it's going to be cold. But I also know that after 45 minutes of water aerobics, I would work up a sweat. That's not the situation anymore. It appears the water temperature issues have become permanent there. Most of us in that pool are of a certain age, and the cold water deeply affects any arthritis we might have, and for most of us, that's about 100% of the class participants. No one should still be shivering when they get out of the pool after 45 minutes of exercise. I stopped participating completely about a year ago, simply because of the water temperature. I don't understand why the water temperature has to be so cold. I don't understand why it can't be fixed or replaced, the water heater I'm talking about. I understand sharing the pool with competitive swimming teams, I understand their need for cold water, I get that. But they don't compete 12 months a year, so I don't understand why it has to be so cold outside of the months of competitive swimming. I don't understand, is this a financial issue for the Park District, for the school district? I used to work with Gene Amberg when the construction of the aquatics center was going on, and he used to call it a, what was it, a marriage of two non-consenting adults, the intergovernmental agreement. I don't remember how the, the mechanics and the facilities broke out in, you know, financial arrangements. I don't, I can't imagine how much programming revenue you're losing due to the loss of the swimmers at the indoor facility. I know former class participants are now going to Stevens YMCA, because the water is much warmer and it's consistently warm. I hope you will address this issue. I miss the water, I miss the exercise, I miss the camaraderie of the people that I swam with. I fail to understand why the cold water temperature is allowed to continue when you know it's a problem, and it has been a problem for quite some time. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, these, these cards that you submitted tonight will be part of the Park District's record for this meeting, so it's, it will not go, this isn't the, isn't just going in the circular file. You are now, you are now part of the, part of this meeting. All right, I think, no, you don't want to talk to us, and that's, I know who's over there in the green shirt. Okay, so I think we can continue. That was public comment, new staff introductions, I don't think we have any of those either, do we?
Not tonight.
Okay, the advisory committee, UPDAC, did not have a meeting in July, so there's not a whole lot to say, except that we have a meeting coming, the next meeting, which will include the new members, is going to be at Phillips', right?
Correct.
And we're going to use the kitchen, so the new members, everybody, everybody will get a chance to see the kitchen, which I think is just fabulous. Consent agenda, we're moving on to the consent agenda, which is on the back of this page. All right, so in the consent agenda, any commissioner can take anything out of it, if they like, and we will put it further on into the meeting under old or new business, depending on what it is, and we will vote in an omnibus fashion to accept and approve the following items. Approval of the minutes of the July 9th regular board meeting, monthly reports, which include administrative, planning, and ops, recreation. We will approve action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and we will approve the monthly paid accounts payable. So anybody got anything to say about that? I think we have to have motion to accept all of those.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go. Katie, you're up, financials.
Well, July was a really busy month, because we had our auditors on-site for a week, and so we spent a lot of time gearing up and then answering all of their questions, but it went very smoothly, so we're moving on with our normal lives at this point, and they've gone back to their office, they sent me the draft report already this week, so I'm starting to write the management discussion and analysis section of the report that goes at the beginning. And so you guys can feel assured that they will be presenting a great report to you come in September or October, we haven't decided, usually it's October, but we're a little ahead of schedule, so if we're finished, we'll report, we'll accept it early. So tonight, I'm going to discuss with you the results of July 2019 for the Park District. So the first report I'll discuss is the revenue and expenditure report. Total revenues for this period, for this three-month period of the fiscal year, were $4,692,000, and we've received about 50% of our property taxes at this point, which we're about back on schedule for the delay in the property tax receipts. The bills are typically due June 1st and September 1st, and that first payment got pushed to July 1st for a due date, and that delayed those first couple of payments that we received, but now that we've received the July funds, we're back, back to kind of our holding place until September payments come through, and the other half of our property taxes get paid.
And there's no anticipation that there's going to be any difficulty with that, because now we're back in the flow, right?
I believe that's correct, yep. I haven't heard any indication that there should be any outs, anything outside of the norm from the county, so. Expenditures for this period were $2,081,000, with a revenue excess over expenditures of $2,611,000 after three months. That was all funds less capital improvements. The capital improvements fund had total revenues of $77,000 and total expenditures of $229,000, with a excess of expenditures over revenues of $151,000. And finally, all funds district-wide, we have a total ending fund balance of $9,722,000 after three months. Following that are the main operating funds, the general fund, the recreation, the museum, and the indoor pool. I'm happy to entertain any questions about those funds. Pretty soon, now that the summer's winding down, probably after August or September, we can start making some projections about how the rest of the year's going to go, since the summer's our busiest season, we tend to have the most expenditures and the most revenues during that period, and everything kind of calms down after that. But so far, everything's just going along.
No alarm bells?
No.
That's great.
The treasures report is the next report that I'll present. So on this one day, July 31st, 2019, the Park District had in our bank accounts $11,466,087.15. The front page of the treasures report breaks out those dollar amounts by fund, in which those funds are invested. On the second page is the fund, the top section lists the funds we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of that, $11,466,000, we have $9,990,000 in investments. And now that we've received our property tax payments, I'm hoping to up the amount we have in Illinois funds again, because the interest rate we're getting on Illinois funds is comparable to what we're getting for CDs.
Yes.
And it's a very liquid fund, so it's not as restrictive as putting something in a three- or a six- or a nine-month CD, so I'll probably be working with Dick in the month of August to increase that, now that our property tax situation's back under control. It was a little iffy at the time, so I transferred a million dollars out of Illinois funds to make sure we had liquidity and make sure we could pay our bills with the delay in the property tax receipts, but I'm ready to transfer it back in. There were no changes to inter-fund loans for this period, and dispersments of funds was typical for the month of July at $784,500. And finally, I'd like to touch briefly on the highlights of the capital budget. Items with an asterisk are where there was, there was activity during the month of July. Sometimes this is so teeny-tiny, I know. LaShonda's asked me to make the text bigger, but I do my best. We received the $100,000 donation from Carl to support our programming for this year, and a portion of that allocation went into the 2019 capital budget for the purchase of the park van, the mobile park unit that we're working on. So I don't know if Andy or Derek is going to talk about that, but those funds were deposited into this account, so that was recognized. We also received $69.50 from IDNR for the rock riffle improvements. And then just today, we found out that the agreement for the remaining, the construction portion of the rock ripples was approved at IDNR, and we received the agreement, and we've invoiced them for those funds. So hopefully, we have this project moving forward at this point.
Are these the, the big rocks that are installed along the new trail? What are rock-
This is the saline-
This is an ancient project.
Oh, sorry.
Saline project about the ammonia spill in the saline at University from, I mean, what, 20 years ago?
Seventeen-year-old.
Right.
Yeah, 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 the seventeen-year solution is-
Drama. But we received the first portion of what they've promised us, and then the next portion Andy invoiced today, so hopefully, we can get our contractor started on the construction pretty readily, as soon as we've received that payment.
And we have the contractor sorted on this, right?
Yeah, you all awarded a bid pending-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we approved it in July.
It was recently.
Yeah, it was conditionally awarded, and then once we receive the check from the state, we'll start executing the contract documents.
The contractor's eager to start.
They are.
Great.
Good.
And the amount of time you think it's going to take?
They're due for substantial completion by the end of next spring, early summer. We're still waiting for the payment for the invoice that Andy invoiced today, it took a while for us to get the agreement back. So we're hopeful that they move a little more quickly on the payment, because we don't want to sign a contract till we have the funds in hand.
Right.
So I guess it's a long way of saying it, there's a potential for delays.
Well, let's see, I wonder if I'll still be on the board when that's done.
We had some activity on the expenditure side, from tributes and donations. Some remaining funds were spent on the PRC playground. The Meadowbrook house repairs are, were continued to be underway. The rock ripples design was also expensed, and they made another payment towards the interpretive exhibit at the nature center that they're working on upgrading, and we also spent some additional funds on the LEO Park improvements related to the parking lot. Those were for design work and also for a variance application to the city.
So are they installing around the gazebo, or?
The gating.
That enclosure?
It's still under design.
We visited Dean Rose's shop last month, we're expecting to go out there again in another couple of weeks, but the variance in the project with the parking lot and path work won't have any impact on the installation of the gate, so once he's ready to install, he'll be authorized to go ahead and do so, and we would just leave the gates open for people to walk through on the path until we have the additional paths constructed around it.
Okay. In the 2018 capital budget, there was no additional revenues, but there was expenditures on tributes and donations, on the James Room project continued, or on, sorry, on ADA projects that were not related to the James Room, sorry about that. We also installed the playground equipment that was purchased with the Burns Tribute Funds at Ambucks Park, so those are really great, a great addition to the park. And we also had spending on the Showmobile, there was some additional amount for registering it, or something that we had to pay.
Yeah, I had to get a title and registration plates for the plates, and I think that was it, was that 103 bucks or something?
Yeah, there was just a little bit of spending. And then some water quality improvement spending at Crystal Lake. And finally, or not finally, but there's only one line item in the 2016, and there was no activity, so in the 2017 budget, we had spending on construction crew projects, the ITUP Park Street Path Project, and finally, at the bottom there, on Crystal Lake improvements. So with that, Andy and Derek have some updates for you on other capital projects.
Wait, hang on a second, we have not accepted the treasures-
I'm so sorry, I rushed right through it.
Well, I didn't put up the stop sign either, so.
Okay.
I move that we accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, you're good.
All right, I'm finished, so on to someone else.
Sure, I'll talk about the, what we're calling, it's the transit vehicle, and it'll be the rec van, it's part of the money that was donated from Carl Hospital. Elsie and I will be meeting in the next week, I think the rec staff have already gone through a lot of the options that can be included with the vehicle, as far as size and storage needs and capacities, so we'll anticipate that we have a bid out for that, probably in the next few weeks, and then I would hope that we could have an approval in probably the October board meeting at that point.
We're looking for that to be about a 14-week process before we get the vehicles, so it's probably going to be a sprint rollout.
Yeah, I'm optimistically going to say February, March, before it can actually get delivered to us.
Is it going to be like a bread truck van, or a?
It's kind of like, a lot of those vehicles you see, it's a-
Transit, the ones that usually have like a extended top.
Gotcha. So it isn't going to be like the Honda Mommy Mobile kind of thing?
Like a what?
The Honda Mommy Mobile.
No, no, no. But we have decided, based on some-
It's more like a utility van, almost.
Yeah, a lot of contractors use them.
Once I started thinking about all the outfitting, I'd have to go in a, a regular passenger van, didn't seem to be making sense.
After some discussion Andy's had, though, we've decided not to get the extended top, the higher top, because it's a little harder to maneuver.
Yep, oh, yeah.
We could have part-timers driving it around, we don't really want them to take the top off on a tree, or something like that.
How boring.
We're going to go with the easier-driving machine than-
That makes good sense.
With our Perkins Road Phase III restoration, last month, our contractor finished the drainage within the large enclosure of the dog park, and has done most of the park road and ditch, while we were waiting for Army Corps permitting to process, and we received that two weeks ago, so work has been able to commence in the wetland area. Tree removals were able to begin August 1st. A lot of site preps currently happening right now, and then preparation for the 15 inches of clay that will then be graded on the wetland, and then the three inches of topsoil for a final grading and seeding, probably later this fall. We've been pretty lucky with weather, so the contractor's been, as far as for a wetland restoration project, has been moving pretty quickly. We've been very happy with, working with Dick. The dog park, we've talked for probably a year and a half or so about access control, adding a key fob system, it'll be a cellular connection for memberships, to authorize memberships before they gain entry into the main gate there. We've been working with Champagne Park District previously to try to have both of us kind of unveil our systems at the same time. Champagne's kind of had some other priorities with their IT and access control in different facilities, so we've decided to kind of just move ahead on our own. And our typical outside IT service provider, MCS, has actually started install for our gate access control system about a week and a half ago, and it'll, like I said, use a key fob for our members, and we're planning a go-live date of September 16th at this point. Judy, in the past year and a half, when we started the process, has done a number of member surveys, and it was pretty well-received, the idea of installing this access control system, and she's been incorporating in monthly newsletters that we're looking to do so as soon as we're able. So now we'll have a letter and different public information materials going out here in the next couple of days, that will let people know that we do have an anticipated go-live date for the system, September 16th, and that current members then would need to go to the Phillips Center to get their new key fob. And then we decided that for any current members, we would not place any sort of additional charge, any fee for them to purchase the new fob. Anyone after that time, then, will have to pay the new membership rate, and then there'll be a $10 fee applied for a new key or a replacement key.
Okay, so if I wanted to walk my, what kind of dog would I have? A golden doodle. If I wanted to walk my golden doodle in Champagne Park, would I have access, and would somebody from Champagne have access to us through the same key fob situation, or not?
You, the Champagne won't have any access control system at all. The Champagne members receive the same- The Champagne members receive the same information. If they want to use the Urbana Park, they would need to come in and, and get their fob.
Oh, I see, I see.
Champagne was moving alongside us and they can, they were just kept hitting roadblock after roadblock. And so we, we felt like we should move forward.
But when they get set up?
It's still reciprocal.
It'll still be.
Okay, all right. So the, the, eventually when it's all, everybody's, each half is running well, then I could take my golden doodle to Champagne.
Yes.
You still can. You can right now. Even when our system's in, you can still go there because they won't even have any access control system.
Regular would get you in.
And you can also, um, get a five punch card or ten punch.
Be a month, it'll be a month pass.
Month thing. So you'll scan that and then we can, we can put an expiration date on those cards, so.
Right, which, which enables some different features. Now we can say that nobody can get in before five AM, nobody can get in after ten PM. And then currently memberships you would purchase by calendar year. No matter if I purchased it in February, it was still good just for that calendar year. Now when you buy a year membership, we can set the control so that it's actually good from a year from the day that you purchased it.
So you're actually buying twelve months whenever you buy it.
Right.
Also mentioned that, you know, this all got started when we were hearing complaints from a lot of the members that non-members. People were just coming in and using the facility, not obeying the rules. There's question whether the dogs were actually vaccinated. And so we began doing some research and talked with the districts that had put in these systems. And, uh, everybody, uh, that is the members were very pleased and membership actually went up afterwards.
Great.
Um, so there, there's probably a few folks that currently don't pay that will be, uh, not happy about this, um, but we're, we're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so if I, if I, if I actually had a dog and I wanted to use this part, I have to come into Phillips and what do I have to have with me?
You have to have proof of your vaccination records.
Right, of the dogs.
And you have to have a checkbook.
So why do you have to come into Phillips to do this? Why can't you do it electronically online?
Because you're going to have to actually get a fob and for this new system. And previously you'd have to get a tag for the dog. But then you also have to provide the vaccination records so then they can see it and say that you're good.
But all of that could be done electronically, correct? Just not getting the fob?
Yeah.
It's not something you can do through, um, our current active net?
I think the key, one key is making sure all the paperwork's in order for the, you know, the vet, that it wasn't forged. I mean, to the best of our ability and to exchange, so they go away with the door opener. You know, we've talked about many ways to try to, you know, reduce somebody's contact, you know, another trip. I think we've got it at least this efficient. Certainly we could look for opportunities in the future if there's, you know, like if vets could send and verify information electronically. I'm not sure that would happen, but that might be something that could happen in the future or, you know, a way to streamline that. But, you know, then we'd have to mail out at cost the fob. So at least it helps reduce some of the mailing and delays in getting it. So ideally you show up, your stuff's in order, you could pay and leave and go straight to the dog parks.
Once you have, I believe, once you have your fobs, uh, in future years, I believe you can do that online.
Okay.
Your initial.
Initial setup as a person.
I think that's, I think, I think that's, that's true. And I think the same system is in, in place today where you can initially come in, uh, to get the, the tags.
Right.
Right. So when dog A dies, can you get dog B?
To come back in.
Right.
Ah, okay.
New vaccinations.
In the system.
Right. You know, there's still some gaps in, I guess, service, if you will. Somebody could do that, get another dog and just keep coming.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Fob to another person. You could open the gate and hold it open. You could throw your dog over.
Well, then you have to climb in.
Those are things that are likely to happen.
Sure.
Real situations. But I think in listening to the membership, we've decided it's best to serve their interests by providing a better system that
I agree.
they prefer. And I think they're, seem reasonable about coming in.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's fairly, it's a lot tighter than it was before.
Right, and I think it slows down. I think you just, you just weed out some of those, some of those problems.
Hopefully.
Still going to have somebody trying to figure out how to get in and, and bypass the system, but probably fewer and fewer.
Well, and it still requires other members to, you know, be aware. If somebody else is holding the door open for, you know, three or four carloads, you know, they should let us know and we'll try to. But if nobody does, there would still be un, you know, unpaid members in there.
Hopefully they'll see it's for the safety of them and their animals.
Right.
Right, absolutely, right. And I think if you're, if you're a person who's, who has the, um, good of your dog enough so that you, in, in mind, so that you're actually coming, taking the dog to the dog park, you aren't just kind of a casual dog owner. You're paying, you're paying more attention to the health and wellness of your dog.
You know, starting from the beginning, the goal was to keep things simple and low cost and easy and rely on the membership. Obviously, we tried that and it didn't work. So we've continued to add services and employees and things like that. So trying to keep it as efficient and affordable and, you know, not complicated is one of our primary goals. But we do listen to the membership and we've gone to this approach to benefit them.
Yeah.
So hopefully they should be very pleased.
Good solution to a.
And then when Champagne gets connected, then I think it should be working both ways. And then that last option of somebody, let's call it a pass-through town visitor, still could go to the Phillips and, you know, get, get a way in if they want. What we don't offer is putting a card in the box and, you know, at the site. So that's sort of a little bit of a trade-off.
So you don't need to go in to, to renew your fob?
Correct.
Correct. Once you're in the system, it's the same dogs.
But the dog needs to be vaccinated on an annual basis, so how do you check that?
Oh, that's a good question.
I think it's, they know the rules and hopefully they're following them. I mean, you go back to the system, trying to make it easy for everyone.
Okay.
And then, just like we had to pay at the gate and you get in, that was kind of an honor system as well.
May allow you to upload that documentation with the registration. I'm not sure about that.
Or, or at least down the line if you, if you can get vets to do that, but.
We can check too to be sure which vaccinations are the most, you know, like.
Yeah, we have a list of required.
We, we can look at that again to see, you know, what's the frequency? Is it the life of the dog on the, the important ones or, you know, what all vaccinations, when do people need to get?
Sure.
Okay.
We can certainly research.
It could require you to download a, a recent vaccination. I, I don't know enough about it to tell you for sure.
It's never simple, is it?
Well, we're trying to assume that.
Oh, great. We'll have a place for the dogs to run. No.
I mean, we don't allow all of our, um, registrations to be done online. Not every single thing you can register for is offered online. I just, I don't know if dog memberships are or not. I imagine they're probably not at this point since we need that interpersonal exchange to give them the, um, fob and, and to receive their vet info. But it might be something that we could expand on, I, I would think.
We'll follow up with some clarification on what our current approach is, how this will be different. We'll do more research to see if we can streamline it more. I think, I think what's happened is there's been a leap of faith that once someone goes the effort to vaccinate their dog, they're likely to have to keep doing it. But we, we may be able to have a system where we can confirm on an annual basis and we'll get back to you all.
Okay. Good question.
Does that include reactivation? So like if they, I don't know if it's an annual basis and say they're late, you know, renewing and they go online and they do all the paperwork. Does it automatically reactivate the, the fob or do they have to come in and have to get it reactivated?
If, if, if we can do it online, yes, it would reactivate as soon as they paid for the membership. But the question is, can you, is there a download for the vaccination for proof or not?
Or, I thought maybe I heard, is there like a thirty day grace period where your fob still works? And yeah, just didn't get there in town and, you know, we'll have to see what parameters the system will allow.
I think there'll be a notice sent out to them when it gets within so many weeks that it's expiring.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm pretty sure when it hits that date, it's not going to work.
Well, and that's what the security and the benefit of the system is to keep people that have paid in and people that haven't out. So it may be a slight inconvenience for somebody that's late.
Imagine similar to an annual pool pass at the indoor.
Right.
Except we don't have to show our vaccinations.
Right.
All right.
I want to move back on, on the, uh, Lille Park project. So, uh, we met with planning staff from the city today to review the variance. It's going to go before the zoning board next Wednesday. Uh, Kara's going to be there to present that. They're going to, um, kind of, first, planning staff will introduce the topic. They'll have a recommendation. Uh, their recommendation is that it move forward. To remind you all, this is a variance that will allow us to extend the current, um, parking lot to the east. Uh, it'll actually be a little bit further south off our, our, uh, limited, uh, construction zone. Uh, you know, uh, the existing, uh, parking lot i- i- is, is not in compliance with, with, with their setback requirements. Um, that we've looked back at our records, can't find any evidence that, that there was any sort of, uh, authorization or variance issued by the city. Um, all that said is we've reviewed this with them. They understand our rationale for why we want to extend to the east. It'll provide better accessibility for staff and visitors that are parking there. It'll be more direct connection with the cottage. Um, it'll be safer, better lit. Uh, it'll be, um, keeping vehicular traffic closer to the University Avenue and preserving more of the backspace of the park, which is more park-like and quiet. Um, the, the alternative, of course, would be to go south and expand to the south, which we could do and we wouldn't, a variance for. It would affect more trees. It would put us closer to our neighbor to the west. Um, so there's a lot of reasons not to consider it and that's why city staff's recommending that, that it be approved.
Oh, good.
But we did want to just give you all an update of where we're at with that pro, 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 project. Um, the gates are, are currently being fabricated. Uh, I expect that they will, uh, be ready for installation shortly after, probably we get that variance. And, uh, as, as we talked about, we can go ahead and install those and keep it open until we have a path that goes around it. And if at some point, uh, we find that the gates aren't needed, if, if, uh, the, the site becomes, uh, less of a conflict zone, we, we can open it up again and, uh, and, and have, have free access through there as well.
Good.
We've, we've opened the gates at, uh, at Carl Park on occasion and, and we can certainly do the same here. Um, at the board meeting where, when we introduced the gates, I think there was a, a request from Michael that we could make them a little more decorative. And we worked with the artist to do so. And I think what he's going to put, put up will, will look quite nice and really reflect the architecture of the facility. Um, he is a true artist and, uh, he's, he's, uh, really appreciate the ability to work with somebody local on, on that side, side of the project.
It is nice, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure you all were aware and looking forward to the outcome.
Thank you. All right, have we, have we missed anything? Anything else you want to tell us? Are, are we, are you done?
Unless you have any questions, I don't know.
Uh, well, yeah, I'll, I'll ask you how, um, what's the timeline on, um, the plantings at, uh, Crystal Lake there?
For ITUP? So the contractor will have about twenty days of work remaining on their contract. And they're allowed to begin work between the window, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's something like September third to September twenty-fifth. There are some, there's some larger window that then, once they decide that they can begin, the clock starts again and they'll have twenty days. So it should be done sometime in late September.
Good, great. You assume that it's going to take them the full twenty days or is that just kind of arbitrary?
We'll see with the weather.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, the weather, the weather.
I think they have enough time unless something, we have torrential downpours for weeks.
Yeah.
We did discover a punch list item just the other day. Actually, Tim noticed on his walk, there's a, a crack in the pavement that they'll need to replace and repair. And there's some additional work they're going to need to do across, uh, park at the apartment complex where the grading isn't as good as it should be. So I think once you start adding punch list items like that and getting everything just the way you want it, things do stretch out a little bit.
Sure, yeah, right.
So they'll be using their full twenty days probably.
I expect so.
Yeah, okay.
I think, but the actual planting portion, I think, will move pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because the sooner they get that stuff in the ground. All right, where are we? Executive Director.
All right, let's see. Just a few things here to touch base. Just want to thank the arts and, uh, culture team and the rec staff for the great job at the art fair. I don't know if anybody made it out, but we had a terrific, um, you know, turnout for that. I think things went really, got some good feedback also, but just reporting, uh, back on that. Look forward to our work next year. A lot of the artists are very excited and want to come back. So we'll, we'll look forward to that. Also want to thank the capital improvement team. Everyone works really hard on updating all of the information, our five-year capital improvement budget. Um, and go over all the monthly projects, just working together, working with our marketing staff too. So if there's stories or information that need to come out of that, they're right there and right on it. We had a follow-up with the Jettie Roads Day Committee and the park district staff and, um, had a good, sort of a wrap-up. Looked at things we could do next year and would like to continue to discuss as we go in the future. So we look forward to that. Want to thank the business office and all the accounting staff for the great job on the audit. It's always a big effort that usually goes under the radar, um, but they did a terrific job. And we really appreciate all the efforts that, um, Martin Hood provide for us. Um, they're really great. If we have questions, they're right there to answer it. They'll offer suggestions or do additional research. So I think we get a good value, uh, from the work that they do and their staff is very professional. Thanks to the planning team for their effort, um, on the strategic plan. We had a few, few more pieces that have been completed there. And on the Blair Park, uh, planning, we had a good turnout and working with, um, Upland Design on that. We'll see more information about Blair Park coming up. Wanted to thank all the committees on the foundation. They're just working really hard. I think we have a great team. Everybody's really kind of taken their area and really trying to expand what they can do. We're all geared up to kind of push, additional pushes to get finished up with the campaign that we've got on the table. So we have some new contacts to reach out to, some other people to start meeting with. And our giving circles, we've got a couple starting in the works. So we're very excited about that, um, in a few different areas. Let's see, um, had a great meeting with, uh, Joe DeLuce from the Champagne Park District and, um, the RST department on future opportunities. You know, back in May, I think we did the sculpture event on at Meadowbrook as a, sort of an honor to thank Robin for his efforts to, Robin Hall to get things moving. But a lot of the comments we got from people there is, hey, is this something we could continue getting people together and having conversations? So one of the ideas we'd like to explore is something like a summit, maybe every other year. So it's not every year and get stale, but maybe a way to get park districts and the alumni, uh, through the RST program and the faculty together. Taking on new topics, sharing. So I think we're really excited. Not sure where that'll end up, but I think it's got some really good potential. Even the idea of working with other universities, maybe people take turns hosting and start spreading, spreading that around.
Uh, Tim, may I interrupt you?
Yes, please.
I'm not sure that everybody listening is or watching is going to know what RST is.
Right, the Recreation, Sports and Tourism Department, thanks, at the University of Illinois. You know, they're looking for ways to connect with our local park districts also. And so many, you know, students come around the state from different places. So working together, we really appreciate that, that they see our local districts as, you know, good options to kind of get the word out. Uh, for our, um, Center for Health Aging and Design, our Chad group that works with the age-friendly population. We volunteered at the Champagne Park District CU Days at the Douglas Center last Saturday. I was at the event and the table and great turnout. And, you know, we're trying to promote opportunities, get people connected that might need age-friendly services. Thinking of particularly our older adults. We certainly think of the whole family, so there's no age limit, of course. But often that's a target that is looking for needing services. So it was great to have a table there and kind of get our strategic plan out there and make sure if they had questions or needed services, we could try to get them connected with the right people. So that was a, a good opportunity to be there. Last week we had a nice visit from Debbie True, uh, True Blood. She's the executive director for IPRA. That's Illinois Park and Rec Association. That's the professional organization that sort of provides services for staff, um, through, through the IPRA, um, umbrella. It's interesting, Debbie's done a tour of seventy-five, her thing is seventy-five conversations. So she's been going around the state. I had invited her several months ago when she came for the event in May. And she said, hey, I'm, I'm kind of doing this tour, going around to meet at different districts. So she met, Corky was available and so he met with me. And I guess her conversations are legitimate. If she goes to a new community, there's at least two new people at a conversation. But we really talked about what we're doing at the district. She was very interested in our, our plans, our future, things, you know, that's critical to Urbana. Also, we asked, how can we help IPRA more? So a few things, you know, that she shared with us is, you know, they're very aware of trying to promote more downstate activities. There's a lot of things that go on in the Chicago area and easier for people to, you know, get on committees or go to workshops and things that they offer. They have offered things downstate and I guess her ask to us is, can you make sure your staff come? It's very difficult for them to justify hosting things downstate. And then if three people show up, it's hard to go back and say, well, we just have to keep offering downstate. So it's sort of our responsibility to attend some of the local things. So I think we agreed we'll do a better job making sure all of our staff are aware. Things that, you know, many of us could participate is the circle. That's the continuing kind of learning that Central Illinois offers in the various districts. So, you know, at a minimum, make sure we're attending those things as well as the other, you know, larger things like conference and things like that.
So downstate to them doesn't mean just Kankakee?
Right.
Right, I mean, really, I mean, how are they?
You know, generally, south. You know, generally, south of Viadis is sort of the, you know, kind of the understood divide, although it's kind of a fluid line. But yes, we would agree, and certainly what we hear also, people further south of us, it's even a little more challenging and harder for them to host, you know, because even the districts are even more spread out.
Right, right.
But kind of really trying to work together. So it was great, I commend her for doing that. I think she's going to do a report. Couple of tips she gave us, she really encouraged us to do an IPRA application for the splash program. We were telling her about that, she had never heard of that particular type of a program, and was very impressed and said, you guys should definitely apply, so we're following up. The other tip I thought was interesting that she gave us, that was what they're, see, maybe it works better for the suburban communities, but pool hours at the outdoor pools. We know at particularly this time of the year, it's getting darker a little bit, our people sort of dropping off. It's expensive to keep open, you know, from maybe seven to eight, or eight to nine. What they found up there is each group that wants to work together would offer late hours, and they could take turns, maybe a week or a couple of weeks, and rotate it.
Oh, yeah.
So if you, if you could go to another pool, you might want to trade off with that. So that may be something, we'll talk with Champagne. I thought it was a good idea. Obviously, some of those programs are reciprocal, not all of them, not all are, you know, reciprocal, but it's a way to save a little money and still provide that later service. So anyway, we thought that was a good tip, but great conversation, we appreciate the work. I think that's the fourth executive director I've worked with. She's doing a terrific job and really enjoy working with her. She's been with IPRA for eight years now, and so I think she's learned a lot and willing to share a lot. Well, let's see, mentioned strategic plan. Obviously, we had a great study session, we had Jared Shaneman come and talk about our focus group work, and I think we got a lot of good information, and would like to reschedule another opportunity for maybe UPDAC or other public groups that we work with to join us, so we'll be working on that. And then on health and wellness, we continue to meet and get updates from our partners on, you know, what their specific needs and interests are. Obviously, we're trying to kind of bring that to a close, so we can get a little bit closer on, you know, what are our next steps. For us, our next step sort of put together an RFQ to get reliable firms that could come in and provide architectural and planning services for us. So those will be things we'll be working on next, and I can answer any questions about other things. I did, and my report, I think, covered the Design for America group we're working with at the University of Illinois. It's just very, very fun, and it's more and better and deeper and more interesting than I thought it would be.
Oh, good.
So I had some preconceived ideas, and we kind of did a brainstorming session and really came up with some neat ideas, so we'll continue to work on that in the future too. Any questions about that or any other things? Great, thanks.
All right, President's not here, he might be back sometime. So, I think it's been hot in France. So unless he's baked onto a bench, and he's coming back. Liaison reports, finance.
We haven't met since June twenty-eighth, but we covered a lot of what we talked about at that June twenty-eighth meeting and study session, so.
Yeah, that was, that was a, that was a nice presentation. All right, policy, ladies?
Um, we last met in May, and we expect to meet again in the fall for further policy review.
All right, Roger, you're back on with the foundation.
Um, we talked about a lot of things. I think a lot of the events that they're having have not, don't have dates attached yet. Um, I know that they are working on a time for the, for the holiday event toward Christmas. Uh, and the only thing that we know about the annual dinner is that it will not be at the country club, it will either be at, oh, Tim, help me.
We were looking at Stone Creek, at their activity area and Broadway Food Hall.
Broadway Food Hall.
Oh, right.
Yeah, probably Stone Creek, but, but those, looking at those two. The thing that's coming up is the, uh, is the reception before the Jazz Walk, that'll be from four to five-thirty. And one of the things that was stressed at the foundation meeting was to invite people that you think might be interested, um, to come to that event and mingle with folks at that event. That'll be at the Meadowbrook Interpretive Center, so.
When is the Jazz Walk?
It's, I'm sorry, September thirteenth. And the reception's from four to five-thirty, and the Jazz Walk's from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
All right. You want to tell them that we haven't met yet?
We haven't met, but we're meeting Monday, August nineteenth.
We are, okay.
Yes, we're meeting.
Confirm that, yep.
Okay, all right, I guess I better put that on. Okay. Okay, Monday, the nineteenth, at one, is that right? At one o'clock?
At the cottage.
Thank you.
My office.
All right, I'll be there, I'm hoping. All right, that's it. Now, old business, I don't think we have any old business.
No, we do not.
All right. So, we are on to Sanford, we're get to you, don't, yep, you're after this. Um, we're going to review the Blair Park master plan and the resolution to apply for the OzLAD grant. Oh, my.
While it's loading, I'll give a little bit of background. So Blair Park Playground is due for replacement in 2020. Uh, it's been on our five-year capital improvement schedule for a while, and when we do playground projects, we often think of it as an opportunity to do a larger project within the park. Uh, and Blair Park is suitable for an OzLAD grant because it offers an opportunity to do a number of recreational amenities. So we've been working with Upland Design on developing an updated master plan for Blair Park that we've been taking out for public comment, and this is that plan. It's, uh, what it reflects is keeping the existing city sidewalks along the east and south, and then doing a loop trail on the north and the west side by adding eight-foot-wide multi-use paths. We've been talking with the city about their interest in expanding the paths on the south and the east, still waiting response on that, but certainly that's in their trail master plan, so we're hopeful that that's something that they will be interested in doing in the not too distant future. This plan also calls for a path that goes east-west across the center of the park. Uh, this is, this is going to be a slightly less wide path, a six-foot-wide, still multi-use path, and then you can see it creates a small loop there, just north of the pavilion, kind of a picnic grove. Uh, north of that loop, we have a proposed basketball court, a half-court, and that was something that wasn't in our original thinking, but when we reviewed it with UPDAC, it came out with high scores. There's a lot of recommendation for doing basketball, and I think it's a good idea. If you look at our basketball courts, they all get a lot of use, and half-court would provide a nice opportunity. Just to the west of that basketball court, they're showing our stage, proposed placement of our portable stage. Uh, we also think it's possible that that stage could be parked on the court itself if it's too soft out or too wet, and provide a platform for playing into that picnic grove to the south. The playground itself is one that went through public comment, and we had a wonderful open house at the, at the park and had a lot of good comment, and we were a little surprised that the one that we weren't in love with, and we liked them both, but the one, the one that had the zip line won out, and so we've worked with Upland to update the playground concept with a zip line that reflects the character of the park. Just south of that playground, you see we have our horseshoe pits. They're proposed to be made accessible, that's something that's been on our ADA transition plan for some time, and by creating a path to it, we can make that accessible. Uh, the, to the east of the playground, we have what's called a Gaga pit, and also a challenge course. Uh, the challenge course was one of our top scores in our public input, and so that is in the grant. The Gaga pit, we're holding off on for now, that's going to be a future improvement, but we're having discussions with some folks from the foundation and other community leaders about their possible interest in funding a few of these additional elements that we couldn't fit into the grant, and that would be on that list.
What is it?
Gaga pit.
Yeah.
It's kind of, I don't know if it's an octagon, and then you, there's a ball, and then I believe you use your feet and kick, and it's kind of like dodgeball inside an enclosure.
Oh.
They have one at, I believe it's Clark Park in Champagne, and it's, uh, it's something that Upland Design has put in a few of their parks, and it seems like it's an attractive element for older kids. It's pretty low-tech. On the higher-tech side, we're proposing a soccer wall or a ball wall, and that's what's pictured down here.
Yeah, that's what you thought was good merit is, right? Yeah.
And that's something that kids can kick a soccer ball at or strike a tennis ball against, they can compete against themselves or others, it's all, it logs your scores online. It can be programmed to be as quiet or as noisy as we want, probably quiet, not too noisy for our neighbors, and to have set hours that it's available for use. And so that, that, and the challenge course would be elements that could really bring in some of that older teen element. Down in the southeast corner, we're proposing making that T-ball field accessible, and that also helps to achieve our ADA plan by having that accessible. We have existing hardball fields that are accessible elsewhere, but we don't have T-ball accessible anywhere in this district, and that is a field that gets used quite a bit, so it made sense to make that accessible. Uh, we're also planning on doing some interpretation, two different interpretive signs, one that would talk about the legacy of J.C. Blair here on the east side of the park near the flowerbed, where we had the large Blair sign that occasionally gets mistaken for a memorial to James Blair, and now we'll tell more of his story. Uh, and then the other would be over in the picnic grove area, where we tell the story of the trees of Blair Park and the diversity of trees, and that ties in with that Blair story too, so, because of course he was a strong, strong tree supporter and designed a lot of our initial tree plantings throughout the district.
Are those grade lines through the T-ball?
They're pointer lines to the features, if that's what you're talking about.
No, no, it's a circle, there's a sort of mountain, a wave-shaped thing?
Yes, it is, you can kind of see some more on this area.
Yep, they just picked up the topo off of the Champagne County GIS, and that's what they're showing. Uh, let's see, I'm looking now at the grant application to see if there's anything I overlooked. I think I hit on everything. Uh, one of the things that we're interested in doing in that picnic grove area is providing an area where people could come in and string up a couple hammocks. Uh, we've been seeing more and more college students putting hammocks up in the park, and currently, the way our park code reads, that you shouldn't do that, and I've actually seen some memorial trees that were damaged by hammocks that were strung up on them, but it's also a growing thing for kid, you know, college kids to do, so we want to provide a place where they could do that, and Tim saw a place where they had some, was it four-by-four, six-by-six posts?
Six-by-six, Matheson State Park.
Oh, I see, so not a tree, oh, yeah, even better idea.
Artificial hookup.
Yeah, well, a good idea.
So it's, we've had a lot of good response from this. Folks are especially excited about the loop trail system. Uh, they're also very excited about a new playground and having the challenge course. Uh, I'll mention that a couple other future things, that pavilion, a future project would be to rehab the pavilion through our design process. Upland helped us realize that that truly is a historic structure, it's called mid-century modern, and we, uh, we really should preserve its historic character. That said, you know, the paving beneath it could be improved, and the bathroom itself, I think it was last rehab early in Tim's career here at the district, and.
It's due.
It's not, yeah, not too far off for an update. Uh, they're also calling for an expanded kind of a terrace area off to the east where we could have some additional seating. That may be an attractive project for a donor. We've, a few of the folks we've talked to seem keyed in on that project. Uh, and the other thing that would be a future would be to redo the tennis courts. Uh, we last did those, I think it was my second year as project manager, and we were able to cooperate with the school district to do it in black and orange, they covered half the seal coat cost, but they are becoming due, probably a few years. At that time, we also would like to recommend replacing the fencing that's there. So that, again, is a project that we're pitching to donors, and it appears that there's some tennis alum from Urbana that have done well later in life, and that might be interested in doing a few of these projects, and certainly that's one that would appeal to them. I guess one last future thing that I'll mention is that the current wood plaza that's on the east side of the north tennis court is one that Keith rebuilt, probably ten years ago, and it's not accessible, and that's something that we would make a future project as well, and maybe also.
But it's still useful, I mean, useful in the sense that people still use it, it's important for us, they have it there.
Correct, yeah, yeah, but we would propose in the future replace that with something that's at grade, accessible. Uh, maybe, maybe more like the Victory Park seating plaza, introduce some plaza, some benches and maybe some planters.
Can you guys mention what, the number one request, what people came out?
Trails, the loop trail.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you have a, um, uh, let's see, how do I describe it? What's on the, if money's available, where's that cutoff line? Here's what we really are going to do, and if money's available, we'll do.
Yep, so if we don't get the grant, uh, we, you know, we currently have four hundred thousand dollars, a little over four hundred thousand dollars of district funds going towards it. It would be the playground and making the paths, making the playground accessible. Then we'd probably start looking at the challenge course and then grow from there. We're hopeful that we will get some donor support as well. It seems like there's a lot of interest in this park. It has such a presence in the community, and we talked with UPDAC about it, everybody had some sort of a connection with the park. And for some people, it was really just driving by, it's community beautification, but it's something that really has captured the attention of Urbana, and I think will have some success.
Right, right.
Very exciting plan.
When I, when I first got on the, on the, maybe even just on UPDAC, but certainly on the board, Bruce Larson would always say when he started, that was a, he has a picture, he had a picture, you seen that, of the, I don't know, corn being harvested, some sort of grain, something being harvested on that block, and people were just appalled that the park district was buying that land, because who would want land that far out of town?
Right.
That far on the edge of town.
We love that story.
Um, the other thing is that I'm wondering if we can tap into some interest in David Foster Wallace. I know that there was, at one point, I think someone had been approached with an idea of at least kind of a memorial bench. David Foster Wallace was an Urbana grad and was a great tennis player. I mean, a great, he was a, he was very happy to be a tennis player at Urbana High School.
So a good writer too.
He was also often. Oh, yes, right, right. I mean, I'm sure Rob was nodding because.
A decent writer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, a very good writer. And I don't think anything came of that initial approach, but I wonder if.
I think there's interest now.
I think there's probably local interest, but I wonder if there's not even some national, some national interest, because he has a pretty strong, pretty strong following. I mean, if I hear about him on NPR, I know that he's not just an Urbana High School graduate tennis player who wrote a bit, so. Yeah, so that would be, yeah, something to.
We've already had some feedback of folks that are probably interested, you know, for that reason, other reasons too, but specifically probably for that.
Yeah.
Someone, the same Raditz alum, have identified the interest in doing something to recognize him.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, internationally famous, right, so.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah, he's a really stellar writer.
So we would suggest that the board approve resolution two thousand nine dash zero eight for the OzLAD grant application in support of pursuing these improvements to the park.
A move that we approve resolution twenty nineteen dash zero eight for the OzLAD grant application for the Blair Park revitalization project.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, need a roll call vote, Roger, who we start with you?
Aye.
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 Okidoke.
Great.
Not a nan site.
I think we're ready for Sanford now.
Ta-da, you're up.
Next two items.
So we're going to talk about intergovernmental agreement with the City of Urbana for medium, medium, media production services. I have my grandkids with me, so I'm less coherent than usual, just saying a lot. That would be it.
You don't have to speak about the two items separately, you can feel free to touch on both while you're here.
Well, no, I think talking about them separately makes some sense.
Okay.
So the first item is the media services agreement. I will give a very quick introduction to it and then answer questions about it. As the memo associated with your packet notes, we did not have a formal agreement to provide Austin and his amazing talents during these meetings, nor Jason, who was here earlier, making sure things were set up. They are Urbana City staff. They are paid by the city of Urbana. There has never been an agreement to provide these recording services. But now we'd like to put one in place. We do have a, uh, billing rate in our schedule of fees, which is $50 an hour. So that is the normal UP TV services rate, uh, that is paid currently by the Regional Planning Commission. So we provide these services for other entities and have not charged, but we were asked by our city administration to formalize agreements and begin charging for these services. So that's why the IGA is in front of you. Uh, the estimated costs, by the way, is we approximate, it should be $1,800 for the year to record, uh, the meetings. Uh, I'll emphasize that the, the hours spent is not just the time that Austin is here or Jason is here helping set up. It's also afterwards with the post-production services as well as posting it on UP TV, uh, websites and sharing it in various media. So that is the media services agreement.
I should also note too that the legal department of the city and Matt Dearing reviewed and went back and forth on all of the legal language of the contract. So, um, there was agreement and review amongst both parties.
It's going to add too, it's a great valuable service for people that certainly at least the filming of the, these meetings, they can't get out or would still like to follow or just would rather watch it on television. So it's a really great way to offer that service.
Well, and I think it helps with transparency and I think that it's just, it's just good. I mean, nobody ever watched it. They could if they wanted to, which is the critical issue.
They do great work.
Yep. So do we want to work through these motions one at a time? Is that what you'd like to do?
Sure.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion on the?
I move that we have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I move that we approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Urbana for media production services.
Second.
Any discussion? Again, a roll call vote. We're just gonna keep going the same way.
Aye.
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 All right, four ayes. Well, you're back up.
I'm back up. And I realize now I should have introduced myself at the beginning. So my name is Sanford Hess. I'm the IT director for the city of Urbana. Uh, I am also responsible for UP TV. So that's why we sort of partnered these two together. Um, so the, uh, the other agreement that you have in front of you is actually replacing an agreement. We found a memo from 2009, which was basically the last agreement sort of that we were aware of. It wasn't really a formal agreement either. Um, and it references that this relationship began in 2002. So, uh, the brief history is that the city provides IT support to the park district. Primarily what that is, is the network infrastructure, the personal desk, the personal computers, the desktops that people use, uh, email, sign-ons, all the, the basic functionality. Uh, so then obviously the, the park district uses other tools on top of that. For example, active was discussed or these, uh, the dog, uh, park openings would be, you know, additional technology that the park district contracts with on the side. And the mention was made earlier about MCS, who does some of the sort of, you know, one-off projects and other, other work for the park district. What the city is providing is core services. So the, the boring stuff. When we, you know, we keep, keep the, the lights on, so to speak, from an IT perspective.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think the key point I would make about this agreement is that IT is, is very hard. Uh, IT services run the gamut. You need people who know computers, the PCs, you need people who know networks, you need people who know security, you need people who know contracts. You know, people who know how to read a vendor agreement. There's lots of aspects to IT.
Customer service.
So, uh, what the park district gets through this agreement is you pay essentially a one-half F, of an FTE. You're paying for a half of an employee. And what you're getting is the skill set from our entire IT team. So whether that's our network administrator who's helping to set up new firewalls, whether that's calling somebody on the phone because the printer's not working, or whether it's someone like me working with Katie on the requirements for the financial system, you're getting a broad range of IT skills all for one low price. Whereas were you to have your own IT shop, you would need to have employees with each of those different skill sets. And honestly, they'd be sitting around a lot of the time because you don't need a full-time person to do each of these things. You need those services on demand, um, you know, as you, as you need them. And sometimes we spend far more time than, you know, uh, one person for 20 hours a week. Uh, for example, you know, the run-up to the training for the finance payroll system rollout, we set up training room, we have all the computers here, we supported, you know, sort of burst of effort. Whereas other times you don't use our services as much and it's quieter. So the, the agreement, uh, you know, to me, it's a, it's a good use of, it's a good use of our services because the other side of it is that for us to support, um, you know, we, we support 250 users at the city. And for us to support the park district on top of that, it's not, we're not talking in, in IT when with computer support, supporting 200 people versus 400 people. And you don't have that many people, but it's not twice as much work.
Right.
It's just incrementally more work. And so for us, it's a good, a cost-effective use of the city's services as well.
I should say too that this particular agreement is, is more restating what we're already doing. It's not really anything new. It's defining our responsibilities clearly, but that half of a FTE is what we've already been doing this whole time. So that's not anything new.
Just want to say too, way back in the early 2000s, probably what prompted that original, um, uh, approach. You know, we looked at what, what could we do on our own? How do we look at that and what would we need? And just with a cursory study in, inside, we didn't hire somebody to come in and analyze us. Well, we actually did as a pre-step. But the short of it was really it's the, the way Sanford, you know, described it. We really couldn't find a way to provide the number of people and the skill sets and, uh, ongoing, ongoing educational needs and just the whole thing. So we found this approach to be much more efficient, um, and the partnership and working together to serve Urbana seemed to be a good mission for all of us. So it's been very helpful and, um, as you can all imagine, IT, well, Sanford said it, it's hard. They, they struggle through a lot of things and they're good at it and, and obviously make it easier for us. So we're very appreciative and, um, you know, and the association is very solid too.
I would say it's great. It's a great relationship because it allows us to focus on what we do best, which is parks and rec and leave IT services to the people that do it best and
Yep.
Pay accordingly. So I think we, they provide a great service for, great service for the value.
Being sure that our network is secure and our email works.
Right.
Critical things.
Boy, I'll say.
And they do so much more that behind the scenes, I mean,
It's endless.
Sean maintains, you know, make sure all of our licenses are updated and, and that we have the right numbers of licenses for everything and, you know, they're very meticulous, so we appreciate it.
And not only are we, is it the staff, anybody who works, any of the citizens who are dealing with the park district online, you're also protecting them and their information. So I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a real value to the citizens and in a, in a real direct way as opposed to the more indirect staff.
Should have mentioned, we, we're talking on the previous agreement to the UP TV services, you know, what Mark's able to do now, work with Jason. It's, it's just a really great added benefit to be able to tell our stories in a different way and reach a different audience in a different media. So that's, that's very exciting too.
Well, and then we also used to pay the city for accounting services for use of Carla, but with the new accounting system, that service will go away. And now we'll pay BSNA for ongoing maintenance and support, um, the cost of which is a little bit less than we are paying for Carla, but we don't have Carla, so. I, that's sad for me, but, um, I still have, ha- have to call her occasionally as we've been winding down the AS400. And I'm, I'm still in the AS400 a lot more frequently than, um, I thought I would have to be. But that's because we didn't bring any of those transactional, tran- no transactions came over.
Yeah.
So if I'm looking at anything before January 17th, 2019, I have to go to the AS400 to see what it was. So, um, which is fine because I'm used to that, but, and Sanford and I have talked about how we're moving forward with decommissioning the AS400 over the next couple of years.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that probably won't be easy.
It'll be mostly exporting to spreadsheets, all of the data, so that we can continue to access it in some form.
And Carla's actually already working on that. So, uh, Carla has referenced, uh, you know, is, was the person who really wrote and maintained all the finance and payroll systems that were used by the city, the park district and other entities. Um, so she is still around and obviously that security blanket of support is still there. But we are working very hard to bring the information out, make it very accessible. So that you don't have to sign on to the, the system to, uh, look it up on the screens. It should be more readily accessible than that.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, the financial aspect, aspect of it is so important because people, you need to know, we need to know, the citizens need to know where there's, where their tax dollars are and what they're being used for, et cetera, et cetera. So it's really important.
We hope residents are, you know, appreciate or maybe folks home watching that, you know, we are always looking for ways to work together to reduce, reduce cost and provide better services and streamlining our efforts. So this is a good example of how we do that together.
Right.
Even though there's exchange of cost, it's a good arrangement and uses everybody's abilities and, you know, puts the taxpayer first.
Right, I agree. I agree completely.
Thank you. Thanks for your time and for coming in.
Yep.
Sure, of course.
Well, I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Urbana for information technology services.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it, four ayes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Oh, we had nobody come to complain. Oh, about the, yeah, about the, the bonds.
I don't think that's, we're just voting on the ability to do it. We're not actually, we're not voting to hear.
Making any decisions or anything.
No, but I was worried, because when I'm sitting here, I'm always worrying about.
I don't know, this is a record-breaking couple of comments.
I know, two in one night is really astounding. All right, so we are now going to talk about an ordinance authorizing the issuance, Jesus, this is a long sentence. Issuance of general obligation park bonds, alternate revenue source of the park district in an aggregate, aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,750,000, et cetera, et cetera. So we go, what do you want to tell us?
Katie, take us away.
Yep. Yeah, really this is, um, just the next step in our process, um, that we discussed last week for refunding on our bond issue. So this is really just setting that upper limit so that the board still has the ability to pick within the options that we presented and discussed last week. This option encompasses even the highest option that we presented. Um, so this is just kind of that perfunctory next step of this process. So we have to at least ask, um, the citizens of Urbana if this is okay. And so what happens now is this will open up a 30-day, uh, petition period that if somebody wa- wanted to, they could petition the citizens to have this put on, um, on a referendum for a vote. Uh, rather than us issuing them, uh, on what's called a backdoor referendum. So that is the purpose of this ordinance and what you're, what we're asking you to approve tonight. So, and we're, we're also planning on having a study session in September, once our full board is back, um, and available, to go back over those options and answer any other questions that you may have thought of over the last month, um, before we finalize the next steps.
Right, right. I know this is, well, I don't know whether this is going to sound silly or not, but I'm wondering if we can find a different way, um, to talk about reusing essentially these bonds. Because refunding makes sense, but somebody who's not as conversant with what we're doing might feel that there was a sense of a refund.
Sure.
And that is not happening.
Correct.
It's confusing, yeah. The term refunding in the bond world, I mean, it's a real term.
Sure, of course, right.
But it means refinancing.
Right.
And it's exactly the same concept as refinancing your mortgage. But I appreciate you being sensitive to the people watching at home because they don't understand that terminology, so.
Well, when we first started, I kept using that word refund as if we're actually getting money in that can go to work for us. It's just in a different way, so I do appreciate that too.
And not just the people that are watching at home, but also whoever is going to receive that notice, um, that, that, that we're considering refinancing.
Yeah, I think refinancing is a good phrase.
And maybe if there is a way to put that in parentheses or, or in, in an ex, in explanation or whatever.
Right.
Obviously refunding is necessary legally, but,
Sure, sure, sure.
So what, so does this have to go in the, in the paper? Remind me what the steps are.
Yeah, they're, um,
But is the language?
They're all laid out in, um, in a schedule that we presented last week and I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized. But yes, there is a notice that goes in the paper associated with this petition.
And is the language of that notice able to be edited or is it very much controlled by?
I believe it's legally dictated.
Yeah, legally dictated, okay.
Chapman and Cutler actually, uh, drafts it for us, but I will certainly keep that in mind and ask that question to see if it can be explained or, you know, maybe you could add on to it to explain.
Already too confusing.
As we, as we continue to talk about it.
Right, or if we could talk about it ourselves at the meeting, if we talk about it as refinancing.
Because many people have refinanced at home for, it's essentially that.
I think that's a really common understanding for people.
Try to use our lay terms, that's probably easier for people to understand.
So essentially that's what it is, is refinancing.
For a better, better interest rate.
Oh, yeah, better interest rates and,
Right.
Right, so yeah, the first piece is that we can ref, we can refinance an existing bond and then we can
Right.
leverage
Right.
what we've already paid.
Which won't incre- and there'll be no tax increase associated with it. It's just a continuation.
Right, of our payments.
If their taxes go up, it's not due to, to the refinancing of this bond.
Apparently many districts do this. We, we just,
It's commonly done. Um, I, we should mention too, it's the vehicle to meet our strategic plan goals. So if we're not able to do this, we really have to consider how we continue with those goals.
Right.
You know, um, because we wouldn't have a visible means, you know, to, to make that happen.
And these are the, and, and the, the goals are, are Crystal Lake Park and the health and wellness. That's, that's the, the two
Right.
major. Or is it not even major? It's just the two?
Those are the two primary.
Facilities, the other is what we think we can do with capital and operating.
We always remember, our,
And it happens to be this, we're at a special time because we can, what was the language? Call?
Yeah, the call date.
Call day.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why it's relevant now and not last year at this time because the original bond issues, the 2010 and 2011 bonds had eight and, or nine and eight-year call dates respectively. And that's the earliest point in time at which you're allowed to refinance them.
Right.
So we weren't allowed to do it last year. We're only allowed to do it now. And the reason we're choosing it to do it now and not next year is because you can't predict the future of interest rates and we know they're really good right now. So that's why, you know, we could do it at any point in the future from this date forward. We have the, we're, the authority to do so. But we're choosing to do it as early as possible because we know there's a favorable interest rate environment.
And we can do both at the same time because it would be possible to do one, one time and another, another time.
That's true.
You save money on all the,
On the cost of issue.
Or the cost of issue, which is not a small, yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
So this is not to exceed, so this does not, uh, keep us from making any, any choices at this point. Will, the hearing is, if, if I recall right, the hearing is, is, uh, at the same time as the next board meeting, is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
So we will be,
Currently scheduled.
Yeah.
Currently scheduled. So we will be discussing at the, um, uh, at the study session, we will be discussing the options in more, in more detail.
Essentially go back over everything we've already shared at Finance Study Group at our last study session and again for that meeting at the September study session. The idea would be, you know, there'd be ample opportunity for people to listen or find out more, call us or make sure the commissioners have everything, you know, all the answers.
Yeah, included in the ordinance, there was this page, it's on the, it's on the second page, the second piece of paper inside, and it's titled Notice of Intent to Issue Bonds and Right to File Petition. So you can see the breakdown there of the total 17,750. 11,550,000 of it is the portion that we're actually paying off the two older bond issuances with. And the 6,200,000 is the new money that we're leveraging at the same time, so as not to have second issuance costs and things like that in the future if, if we were to do this as two separate issues. So, um, that breaks it down for you a little bit. So you could see, it could be anywhere within that range of the options that we've discussed. We don't particularly want to go any higher and so we are limiting it to 17,750, but.
Right. And if you remember, the, sort of that ceiling was what could we responsibly, you know, pay back without undue burden or really shifting up our priorities.
I missed last week, so thanks for catching me up.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
And again, we'll, we'll go back over this.
If you want to meet with me, I can go over the whole packet with you too. I'm happy to do that.
I'll take on this.
You're going to do it.
Sure.
It's a big one.
I move to approve the ordinance 2019 dash zero eight authorizing the issuance of a general obligation park bonds, alternate revenue source of the park district in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,750,000 to pay the cost of renovations and improvements to Crystal Lake Park and building and equipping a health and wellness facility or constructing various health and wellness projects throughout the park district. Refunding, also known as certain outstanding bonds of the district and paying expenses, expenses incident there too.
Second.
All right. Do we want to talk about this anymore?
No, okay.
Aye.
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 We've removed no business from the consent agenda, so we're on to number nine, comments from commissioners. Does anybody have anything?
I just have a comment. A few residents around King Park have asked me what could they do to help the Park District, when vandalism occurs. Made a post to kind of make them aware of the incident that happened. And so they're willing to, there's several. Because they were excited about the mural, they, you know, are really upset about the vandalism occurring again with the pavilion. And have reached out and want to know, um, what can they do when these things happen? Can they help assistant cleanup? Can they, you know, what can they do? So, um, there's at least seven that have reached out. Um, and I think it's an opportunity to maybe make those connections. If incidents like that occur in the future, um, maybe offset some of the costs. I don't know, somewhere for, for time and effort on the Park District. Maybe, you know, that's an opportunity for the, the residents to get engaged.
Right, well, I think, LaShawna, that's terrific news. Often when we have vandalism, we don't necessarily always get that response. So it's a great opportunity for outreach. Second, we'd love to meet with the group. If there was people that could meet, you know, to talk about what are they interested in doing, what's their comfort level? You know, just brainstorming off the top, forming, you know, neighborhood, kind of an association. So there's a more formalized approach to share information. Certainly there's things we can do to interface. But I'll, I'll tell you, just people that are concerned, that's, that's golden. And that's the most important. We don't often hear that. So we really, really appreciate that opportunity to work, you know, in a park that might have a way to offset or event or prevent or eliminate completely, you know, vandalism. So that's, that's a great opportunity and we look forward to that. We'd be happy to reach out with names or work through you, however everyone's comfortable. But, you know, there's probably more we can do as we continue. But like anything that people care about, the more they work together, preserve it and protect it, I think you'll see better, you know, outcomes of that. That doesn't mean something still couldn't happen, but when everyone's focused on, you know, this is, park's important to us. We want to do what we can do or at least work together to stave off things like that, that, that's terrific.
Or if they were interested in being on Up Deck, we'd be happy to have them on.
More than happy.
Yeah, that's, that's another opportunity.
Yes, it is, and people who are, who are already interested in their neighborhood partner who can speak
It's a good start.
To the interests of their park are, you know, we, the more people we have like that, the better off we all are.
And, you know, to be fair, probably every park district has its share of that, you know, sort of thing. There's just something about public property and the assumption it's nobody's. The reality is it's everybody's and it's pretty important to the people that live real close to it. So, um, it becomes very personal. But I think working together with that offer, we could definitely make some inroads and look forward to that.
I don't know if it helps, but, you know, it, it's not just King Park, just over the weekend, one of our pavilions in, in Crystal Lake got pretty trashed. When that happens, we try to jump on as quickly as we can because it's really an eyesore. So, um, I, I think maybe there's a good opportunity for a park cleanup day. But I think with that vandalism stuff, we're, we're just going to want to clean that up as quickly as we can so that we can get the park back to normal and hopefully people can get back to enjoying the park.
I think the research always indicates positive steps tend to really go a long way in changing that. Because somebody's watching and people care.
Amex Park, I think, three weeks ago got hit really hard. So I think we're seeing more, more of it unfortunately. It seems like it's always been high, but it, there's been a little bit of a spike lately. Just scratching your head, heads a bit, trying to figure what's different.
Right, you know, we, we talk about cameras and things like that, but you need more than that. You know, there's ways around that and they're not foolproof. And so that's, I guess I'm saying, that's not always the answer. It's going to take a community to work together to make a difference.
Right, does anybody else want to comment?
Um, I just want to comment about the, um, situation at Meadowbrook and the organic gardens. And, um, I actually was out there, uh, I don't know, this weekend, Monday maybe, uh, and noticed, and had just noticed for the first paid attention that, oh wow, there are a lot of gardens that are no, they're not being used. And so, um, there's definitely a perception of, of things gone awry. And I, I, I don't know what the plan would be, but I would encourage us to look into this. Uh, more than just a survey, focus groups seem to me like an appropriate method at this point. And people who, who are willing and who participated, um, sort of get a sense of what's going on. We know the deer is our, I mean, perennial. But I, I mean, I think there's some very valid points and, um, it seems like it's been a, I, I don't know how long the trend, the, the trail off in terms of participation has been happening. If that's been fairly steady. And I think it's, um, it's, it's a small, I mean, and I appreciated that, um, she brought, she had some solutions. She just, you know, um, and so I would just encourage us to keep looking at that going forward.
Audrey did reach out to staff, uh, as recently as last week. We met on Thursday to review her comments. We're going to be following up with additional soil testing. Three years ago when we tested the soil, it, the recommendations were, were really stop doing manure. And we talked with several other, um, agronomy professionals and all but one said the same thing. One said, well, I'm surprised at the manure. And one of our, our follow-ups was to contact that person, talk with them more about, about that. We've worked with, um, the Midwest Grows Green group through the Integrated Pest Management group. And, and they're also saying the same thing, don't do any more manure. But I think we can make that message better broadcast. And what, what we've talked about is, is, uh, providing gardeners with, with compost as, as an alternative soil amendment. We had concerns about that until we got the recommendations back from Integrated Pest Management that that would be suitable. They're a little concerned about some of, one amendment that they're adding to the compost at, at LRC. So we want to see if we can get that pulled out. Um, I was going to be giving Audrey a call back already, um, so now according to him on, on our response to her. But, uh, that, the soil fertility is something that we've been aware of, it's been a concern. Three years ago, we had some complaints about it and that's why we started testing. So now we want to do more broadcast testing. We're hopeful that we'll see that things have gotten better with our, uh, not applying or not, not tanning up the manure. There's also concern about the manure, it, it came in, uh, as green manure.
Right, that's, I, that's, I, I think that, that the difficulties that you often have novice gardeners out there, and they think, ah, manure, I'm just going to put it on. Well, if you put it on green early in the season, you're sunk. I mean, because it's going to take, it's going to take nitrogen to break that down so that you're, that you're, that you're at a loss. And, and I think.
Carbon-nitrogen ratio is all.
And once upon a time, um, I think there was, and I don't, I, I can't speak to what the programming looks like now. I, I don't know if there is, what the educational component looks like. It sounded like, you know, there was, it was a, there's a holistic piece, right? Some of the things in the manual are outdated. And, and if there are new gardeners, um, you know, what type of, you know, there was like a, you know, a session and a meeting and maybe you still do all that and that's great.
I think the communication is, with the gardeners is really something that we really need to, to work at. Because, um, but you know, it's not our job to teach gardening 101 either.
We, we've done that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we, we've done that in cooperation though with, um.
Extension might be.
No, uh, well, oh my gosh, it's not our Park District land, it's the, um.
Campus?
On Washington.
But does it start with?
Learman.
Learman. I mean, I'm not sure what we're doing at Learman, but we're doing quite a bit at Learman. And I don't know, you know, are there things that we're doing for that community group that we should also be looking at? Oh, maybe we need to also do this for ourselves and our own program.
I think there's a lot of information we need to put together and we need to communicate it. We also need to get people to understand the communication. You know, sometimes people don't necessarily accept the information that we provide or attend or participate at the levels. So I think it's going to take, again, the community to work together. But I would be remiss if I didn't say the many other gardeners that do enjoy being there. And, you know, we hear positive comments also. I think it's just kind of where we are in the process.
Like a focus group to, to get a variety of, yeah.
Find out how we can address them together.
The other issue that she talked about was, uh, was, was tools being available and that sort of thing. Is that, is that a policy that has changed or?
You know, I don't know if we want to discuss every point that tonight.
No, I, I don't, I don't want to.
And I'm ready to, but I think, you know, I think those are issues we'd have to work together to see what, what, how do we want to present it? And, you know, what can be done and what's changed over the years too. You know, it's not the same organic garden program that we started with. And there's others out there and so I think there's, there's, there's things we need to focus on and put together. And then I think, you know, share it with our garden participants.
Yeah, and I think we're not the only ones, if you look on the, at the, and at the University of Gardens on, on race, those used to be really flourishing and now it's, there, I don't think there's anyone gardening.
There, there, there is, but there are, there are few.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There are, there are very few.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I, this is an ongoing conversation in my water aerobics class. Because I, aerobic next to a gardener out there. And so we, we talk about it a lot and that was one of the things that she pointed out. But she pointed out that the amenities out there were nowhere near what we have at, at Meadowbrook. I mean, there wasn't, you know, they didn't have, I love this, hose bibs. They didn't have all those, all those kinds of things which, which we obviously have. But there's, there's a lot, yeah, I think it's just time for a, for a retool.
A refresh. Make sure everyone understands, you know, the whole, the whole landscape, no pun intended.
She mentioned Matt Ball because we're planning on Matt doing the program out there in the spring about controlling mugwort. Because that is a, become a real problem out there. Hardemisia vulgaris appropriately named.
Oh, vulgaris, I like that.
It's really pretty aggressive out there and probably got introduced, you know, through someone's gardening because it is, it's, uh, a lot of people garden it for, uh, for different reasons. Um, but it's actually invading the prairie now, which is why we wanted to have Matt come in and explain its challenges.
Yeah, I cannot believe anybody suggested putting mint to keep out deer.
It's in publications, so there's different plants you can use to try to discourage deer. But I think there's generally disclaimers, they may not work and they may have other detrimental or challenging effects.
Yeah, I think this is probably somebody from DNR who said, let's plant autumn olive and, oh, that rose along the road.
There's been, there have been plenty of botanical faux pas. And mistakes in both the insect-like, that's why we, and the plant world. So we have the Asian swabbing beetle here, the aphid, you know, the, the Japanese lady beetles don't do their job.
I mean, when I, when I garden out there.
That was an, that was an integrated pest management disaster.
Integration, yes. Alright, I'm, don't, anybody else have anything to say?
Well, what about the pool? That's still continuing to be work. I mean, you guys are still continuing to work on the temperature, right?
I think that's another area of, you know, it's hard to get the information and communicate it when you have totally different user groups. But I think we'll get our staff together and get a refresh on that and see how we can re-present the information back to the membership.
And there is a group that swims year-round, that, that, there are competitive swimmers who swim the year-round. At that, at the pool. So, okay. She was, but she hasn't been there for years, so she, she wouldn't know that. Anyway, okay, I think if nothing else, we're all done. I'll pass that down to assume.
Thank you, Kelsey, for taking over for Allison.